On order here, the regular meeting of the city council of Rentz Pass, six hundred west Cleveland Boulevard, December nineteenth, twenty sixteen.
Please all rise for the invocation.
Lord, we ask for your blessings on this community as people come and go through our city limits. We ask you to watch over everybody. Send your blessings to our children, our elderly, the ones that have passed on. We ask you to keep us in your mind and your hearts through these holidays as time slides by. We ought to give you thanks for the strength, the power that you give us each and one day every day to overcome a lot of obstacles. But mainly and truly, we'd like to say thank you, Lord, for each day. Amen.
Amen.
Blanche Lee, just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring us to item three one will be a presentation from our police chief, Mr. Eric Blanchard.
Nicky, mayor, council, I'll stand up for this. It's not often, though it may seem like it, we've given our three within the last couple of years, but we have an officer in the audience today that, uh, say the gentleman's life, and when they do that, we recognize him formally, and I'm just going to read this off. This recitation is hereby given to Police Captain David Wood for the outstanding manner in which you performed your duties on November twenty ninth, two thousand and sixteen, when you responded to the Gulf Sky Motel in Aransas Pass. Upon arrival, you encountered a forty-four-year-old male who was not breathing. The subject was down and foaming from the mouth while exhibiting, exhibiting antacchnal respirations, which we call death breaths. You quickly sprang into action delivering life-saving CPR and by administering the AED, which we have by virtue of our Coastal Bend Foundation that provided us with all these new AEDs. Drawing from your training, experience, and devotion to public service, you took command in the situation. Your deliberate and precise response meant emergency medical care was provided in a timely manner. EMS staff recognized your efforts as having severely impacted the gentleman's ability to hold on to life. Without your presence and commanding actions, this gentleman may not have lived to see another day. Today, the Aransas Pass Police Department takes great pride in awarding you with this life-saving award. Your actions November twenty ninth have been directly attributed to saving a life. Your, your performance during this event epitomizes our core values of honor, commitment, compassion, and wisdom, and the true meaning of public service, and for that, I thank you. We, we actually spoke to this gentleman, it's not revealing his identity, but it is well documented, but we spoke to this gentleman, uh, just the other day to see how he was doing, and he is alive and well. And with that, the officers have the, the award of the pin, so he'll be wearing this pin on his uniform, and then in formal dress, you could even use the ribbon.
Thank you, Eric.
This brings us to item three two, our presentation by LJ Engineer.
Mayor, council, um, Pat Vettito is, is here with LJ to begin a discussion of what would, in essence, be needed to begin transforming the north side of town with, um, not only sewer service, but of the utilities that may begin being able to create affordable housing in, uh, in our community and address a much-needed housing shortage. I don't, uh, know how many of you are aware, but we have over three thousand twenty-five-foot lots in the north side of town, as well as large tracts of property that can be subdivided into, um, our standard fifty to sixty-five-foot lot section. And I want to pull up just the, um, just the San Petricio portion of that mud, which is this blue line. A good portion of the north side resides in Aransas County. So, if you can see the, the bottom tip of that, there's a, a great number of those infill lots, and it basically extends almost to Loboia, and it'll go up to Armstrong Road. The reason for that, uh, the reason we're looking at a mud is because expansion of our sewer treatment plant would be very expensive in the twenty million dollar-plus range for a new and upgraded plant. Obviously, there's not twenty million dollars, uh, sitting in the pot or somewhere. So, Pat and I have begun a discussion about what it would take to, um, create a smaller, perhaps packaged plant or some other mechanism to be able to treat sewer in the north side of town. Um, our plant is, uh, going to be nearing capacity anyway. We're going to be at a point where we need to begin planning, uh, at the treatment plant, and that's with current estimates of growth. That has not begun to address the growth that will happen at Highland Johnson Roads and Beasley once that water and sewer is there as well. Um, those lots are five-acre tracts, and right now, um, can go on septic and are on septic and aren't really impacting the plant. As we move forward into development and that whole, if you build it, they will come, and sewer begins to be available, we expect the plant to reach capacity, uh, a lot quicker than perhaps we had anticipated. So, in order to focus our attention and continue the growth pattern, um, you guys voted, the council voted on, uh, the capital plan, which, if you recall, creates the spines. You have Highland Johnson Roads, Beasley, you have Ebert, and then we move on to Young and Moore and so on and so forth, and you begin to create those arterials bounded by, um, ten sixty-nine and then bounded by Commercial. So, this is, um, one option that we're looking at. It is a much less expensive option, and the option would be spread among those, um, recipients within that growth area. So, Pat has brought some maps. It is similar to the map that you see up on the screen as to what would be serviced within that area. It is, uh, an out-of-the-box thinking. This is not, uh, this is not what normal communities have to do. I am, uh, very conservative when it comes to how much we should borrow and how much we need to hedge. I don't want to get ourselves in a situation with other communities where they anticipated a lot of growth, they went and borrowed, that growth didn't happen, that, um, burden was left to the rest of the residents on top of their normal sanitary sewer costs. So, Pat, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pat Vettito, LJ Engineering. Sylvia asked me to take a look at this three thousand acre tract and to, to come up with some ideas of how you might create a mud. Houston is, uh, probably the mud capital of the country anyway, and my firm has created or helped folks create over a hundred of those muds ranging from a few hundred acres to several thousand acres. This is a three thousand acre spot, and, uh, the first thing that you had to do is do a little conceptual land use plan in that three thousand acres. And from that, we would lay out some preliminary water and sewer and drainage facilities, and from that, create a cost estimate. And then, uh, in addition to that, we would have to locate a sewer plant that could be built in phases and expanded. And so, at the end of that, you would have a, a drawing that shows generally what would be done in that three thousand acres, and generally what you think the cost would be. And then beyond that, come up with a bond purchase and financing plan. And so, the fir-, again, the first step is to come up with this conceptual plan and cost estimate, and, uh, we think somewhere in the range of about fifty thousand dollars, we could come up with that for you.
That's just for the blueprints, right?
That's just for the, the conceptual plan to, to come up with what we think it might cost to do this. That, that would not be the plans to build, if that would just be the plans to cost estimate. Just to give you a, a ballpark, and we want, this would be better than a ballpark. Just to give you a ballpark, probably you're looking at a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre to develop streets and drainage and water and sewer. You probably then are looking at, uh, how many, how many units do you think per acre we should plan for?
Right now, what would be our minimum density, which, um, you're probably looking at four units an acre.
Four units an acre. So, if we had a thousand acres, that's four thousand units, here in my calculator. So, let's take, uh, three thousand acres times four, twelve thousand units, living unit equivalents. Uh, a good estimate would be about three hundred and fifty gallons per day for a wastewater plant, so four point two million gallons. And then a cost estimate with that would probably be in the neigh-, in the neighborhood of ten dollars per gallon per day. So, that's easy to do. That'd be forty-two million dollars for a sewer plant. So, forty-two million dollars for a sewer plant, and then three thousand acres times a hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre. That's another four hundred and fifty million dollars for a total of almost five hundred million to do three thousand acres. You probably don't want to bite off three thousand acres all at one time. So, this could be phased, perhaps five hundred acres in the first phase. But it's still a lot of money.
And the capacity of the plant would be in phases also, as it grows?
Yes, yes. Again, the first step is, what do we really think it costs? I've given you some very broad numbers, but what do we really think it would cost? And then if you want to break it into phases, what would the first phase cost?
Let's say everything goes and you build it, and then you split what's going to what, what we have now?
Yes, yes.
What you have now would continue going to the plant you have now.
What we have will continue.
Yeah, this would be a completely separate piece of property and plant.
Really, from here to there, probably.
I think what's, what's important for the council to understand is we are rapidly approaching a point where, um, we're going to need to start looking at addressing the sewer capacity here very quickly. And the most economical way is to do it in phases. And we've done probably in the neighborhood of a million, a million and a half improvements to the sewer treatment plant since I've been here. That, you know, just the clarifiers alone, um, created some capacity because we hadn't had a whole lot of maintenance and operations done, uh, at that particular point in time. But we, we do have to turn our attention to the area, other areas of town, and as you begin to see the annexation happening to our sister cities, um, we begin. I remember when I first started, we had the conversation of protecting the boundaries and protecting the CCN service areas. We've got to show the state that we have a capacity to serve the areas, otherwise, you know, we really begin to lose ground very quickly to our sister cities.
Will we be able to divert any of our existing, uh, flow to this new one if everything works out or not?
Well, I guess you could. You, I don't know why you would want to. The, uh, your, your existing plant needs to be upgraded for, as time goes on.
Right.
But you'd have a completely separate plant for this three thousand acres.
In our plant right now, is it, we don't have any room to expand on that one, is that correct?
No, the, um, some prior mitigation, there was a whole lot of land given up along our sewer treatment plant. We gave it up for, um, seagrass mitigation, so there's not a whole lot of room at the existing plant anyway. It's a beautiful location, just not a whole lot of room there, unless we turn LWR into, and that's, that's, that's not a, that's not a possibility. We'll have some more, um, information to council at the, uh, second meeting in January.
All right, this is going to bring us to item five, the consent agenda. All of the following items of consent agenda considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. We're also looking at item five one, also ordinance twenty sixteen dash forty-one seventy-three.
And five two, man.
Okay, thank you, sir. Five two, also. Approval of the minutes of December fifth, twenty sixteen.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Sylvia, you're up.
Um, Mayor and Council, the first item before you is electrical and utilities work, uh, at the dog park, and I do have Eli, our consulting engineer, here. Uh, the original plans for the dog park included, uh, water, a water feature, an ongoing water feature, and the water would then be reused, um, as irrigation in the park. Um, it also includes some electrical for lighting and safety purposes out there. Uh, the lowest bid right now came in at a hundred and seven thousand dollars, uh, and I don't know about Eli, but I was floored with that amount. I can tell you that we will have to take some funds from other park projects in order to even meet that low bid. So, I am asking the council to table those and let us revamp the design and come back with something that is perhaps twenty-five or thirty percent of that cost.
I'll make a motion, we table item seven one.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Um, the next item before you is, uh, the RFP for mulching and grinding services. Um, as you know, we have a, um, what is basically almost the Grand Canyon of brush over at the collection site. We have received, um, notice by TCQ that we need to start getting rid of that. We don't have a grinder ourselves, and so we went out for RFP. Um, the only respondent was Dawson Services, who is, uh, in the audience, and those are the prices, uh, that were given. At this point, I don't know how many, uh, yards it would create. So, what I'm asking the council is to award no more than what we budgeted, uh, and that was seventy thousand dollars. Mr. Dawson, if you would, if you would come up to the podium, seventy thousand may not, may not complete the job. Uh, that's in the range that the other respondents had given us before when we went out seeking, um, a price range. We got anywhere from seventy to seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, complete turnkey, they would leave the mulch there that we would then turn around and be able to give it to the residents. Um, the smaller size mulch is what people want to use in their landscaping, but that's also the more expensive. So, that's where we are today.
Well, I definitely would say just stick with the six-inch mulch, and, because that's the cheapest. In, in your opinion, because you've probably been out there and seen what we have out there?
There's a lot. It, you know, it, it, the way it's piled up, the way it's, uh, uh,
There could be some voids.
Kind of separate, separated, yeah. It, it's hard to tell unless you're actually up in the air looking down on it, how much is there. Grass has grown up for a while. There's some shingles that are piled up there as well. Um, you know, she, Sylvia had mentioned to me, you know, what if we do a, a not-to-exceed, and then come back to council later? If y'all want to do some more, then we'll do some more, and try to get you guys set up on a schedule of, uh, like twice a year, which is what most of the other municipalities do. Ranses County, Ingleside, Port Aransas, City of Corpus, they all try to grind about twice a year. Come in, do, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand yards or whatever until we get you guys cut up, caught up, everything cleaned up and, and so forth. Six-inch mulch is the cheapest, the fastest way to do it. Sylvia has a good point when she, uh, is talking about going back, and if, if someone's wanting to use this in their yard or their flower bed, or to make a, a walkway or driveway or something like that, they're going to want a smaller mulch. If you got a Lowe's and buy mulch, you're going to be buying a two-inch minus, so, you know, to what you put in your flower beds. We also have the ability to color it.
Yes, sir, it would be free.
And we also have the ability to co-, cu-, color it if you wanted to color it. So, yeah, how you offer it back to the, to the citizens is, you know, that would be up to, up to you guys.
Well, and we've talked about, uh, exchanging a portion of it with super dirt, so being able to give the residents super dirt as well as mulch. Um, it gives us a way to get rid of the mulch because it is highly flammable. I'll let Mr. Dawson explain.
It's, it's, uh, once you've got mulch, if it sits in a pile, it's okay, but if you start messing with it too much, it does come, become combustible. Um, the middle is what heats up. Uh, if you're just pulling and pulling and pulling off and, and giving it to the residents or disposing it of it, however, utilizing it of it, however, it's not a problem, but if you start turning it and turning it and turning it, that's how you make compost, which is what super dirt does. So, she's, she's on the right path of, of doing that, helping get rid of one material and bring in another material that can also be utilized would help y'all, uh, get rid of the piles a lot quicker. If you've got, instead of having a hundred percent of, of just mulch, fifty percent mulch, fifty percent dirt, you know what I'm saying? The citizens are, are liable to act faster and, and, uh, move quicker and help you get rid of the, get rid of the material and clean it up, which is the, the main objective.
Where would you probably start in the front or towards the back and work your way that direction?
I would prefer to start in the front.
Okay.
Um, and I think that would probably work out better for the city, too. That way, when y'all are continuing to accept, you know, that's, that way your guys aren't having to take the material all the way to the back. It'd be less, more efficient for y'all. So, start in the front, work our way to the back. If you want us to come back in two months, three months, six months, whatever, we'll come back and, and work up some more. So, no agreement on here, when we come, what day we come, how far apart we come, as long as we can fit it with our schedule, we'll be more than happy to work with the city.
But for this initial grind, you guys would set up on-site, you would?
We'd set up on-site. We'd be bringing a machine, uh, the grinder, Toroto Chopper, F P sixty-six. Has it been, it has the ability on a perfect day, perfect scenario, nothing goes wrong, the wind is right, no rain, you can do four thousand yards a day. So, we bring an excavator with it to load the machine, and then it would, uh, would grind your material and, and then stack it up.
So, the material stacks it up, or do your guys move it?
No, the material stacks. Yes, sir.
When you get to a certain point, you just move your piece of equipment and stack some more, or how's it work?
Sir?
When you get a certain amount of equipment, the, what's coming out, do you move your equipment?
Usually the, usually the, the client has a, a, a loader on-site, because that's how they've been stacking their material anyways. So, they would just scoop it up and move it over here and, and maybe put it closer to your scale. A pile at least, that way it's easier and cheaper when y'all start doing it later, and then the other, wherever y'all decide to stockpile.
All, all of the logistics still need to be worked out with Ferrando and his crew as to what, when, where, now.
You've got a three-to-one to four-to-one ratio, so if, of, of the ground material. So, whatever you have now, if you were to put that in one big pile and you ground it up, it would be three to four times smaller than what it is now.
All right. Building anything?
No. Sylvia, you said we bu-, only budgeted seventy thousand for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
See what seventy does.
That's what I'm thinking.
I'm hoping it does ninety-five to a hundred percent.
I'm not putting a guarantee.
He's, he, he's also, he's supposed to be researching how we can use it for road base. Because I'm adamant that old Roman roads were built with wood mulch as well and some cementitious materials.
She, she has asked me to look into that. I have, I spent about two hours doing it because I got sidetracked a couple of times. But I have found where they use rock and stone, but I haven't come up with the, with the mulch part. But I'm still looking for it because that's a very interesting idea. And I think it could be utilized in many places, not just here.
Sure.
Then we could really sell it.
And we're local, of course. We're right over in Gregory. So we've been here for nineteen years. Family's been in the area since nineteen fifty-two. So, you know, it's not a problem. We're not charging a, which our competition charges a mobilization fee. Usually when they come in, that's anywhere from thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred dollars. We completely waive that fee for the local areas when we do those. We're not going to be charging that mobilization at all. So to help out with y'all's bottom line, because that's what we're all looking at, is the bottom line.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I would say six-inch, just to get rid of it. Yeah. Well, I make a motion that we award the bid to Dawson Recycling, the six-inch mulch, not to exceed seventy thousand dollars.
Second.
Will first say aye.
Aye.
Mayor and council, the next item before you is the award of the bid for engineering services for CDBG grant proposals. It used to be that the city would pick a project and we would apply for a grant. And we would say, we need three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for X award. The state would review it, they'd award the grant, and then the city would come back and say, oh, we fudged. We really needed five hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand or whatever that amount was. So the state has turned that procurement process around. They've asked us to award an engineer first, first the grant administrator, which you guys approved at the last council meeting. And now an engineer to develop cost proposals so that when we go out for bid, those proposals are more on point. The responses that we had, had several questions that were missing. So as opposed to starting the process all over again because we are near some grant cycles, we picked the questions that were respondent to all of the administrat, all of the engineers. That is the scoring sheet. LJA scored number one on the scoring sheet, followed by urban, I'm sorry, followed by LNV, and then followed by urban engineering. All of the firms have previously designed CDBG projects. They are all certified administrators in the Texas CDBG projects. And they all have current staffing. So really what the turning point was, was how many projects have they successfully completed on time and on budget? And that's where LJA scored the most in experience and on time and on budget.
Any questions, Phil? No, I'm good.
Well, I make a motion that we award the bid to LJA for engineering on the twenty seventeen, twenty-eight grant application cycle.
Second.
Will first say aye.
Aye.
The next item up for bid is electrical work. I'm sorry, the next item up for discussion is electrical work at the community park. There was a change order that was submitted that requires a change in material type of one thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And that's really, the water table is very, very high at Community Park, and it is in a floodway. So we've had to make changes along the way. And the vendor's been able to change one for the other with really no net increase. This last one had, had an increase of a thousand five hundred and eighty-eight.
What was it exactly, you know?
It is a delete sleeve and receptacles. Prepare and alternate, add water line and backflow preventer, and add circuit breakers. So we removed a more expensive pin and sleeve connection. And then we're replacing it with water and backflow. That's in your...
Are these the same ones they're talking about for like a quick connect when they do the hook-up for?
Yes, yes. It will still be a...
Removable.
Yes, it's still going to be removable. It's just a different type. The junction box, the pin and sleeve was too large. And we still have to protect, water protect things because it is in a floodway.
I make a motion, we approve the change order with CNI Electric for the electrical and plumbing bleacher bender pad project.
Second the motion.
Will first say aye.
Aye.
The next item is also a change order. This is with S&amp;J Fence Company. There was a privacy fence, not a privacy fence, a chain link fence added around Community Park, the Dog Park, the Little League Park, and the Adult Softball Field parks. There is an additional gate that we're requesting that would give staff better access to mowing in that area. And they gave us credit for a different fence removal and different type, and that left a hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty cents.
So the change order is for one ninety-six?
Correct.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the change order with S&amp;J Fence for one ninety-six twenty.
Second.
Will first say aye.
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 The next item before you is the resolution. You heard Betty Collier with Grant Works up, talking about the CDBG grant application cycle. We are looking currently, the Fulman Acres area is what has been funded through the county, through San Patricio County. We will be applying and feel we can be very successful with the Sherwood Forest area. To the Fulman Acres site, the city is adding some funding that's going to bring sewer down into the Sherwood Forest area. This application cycle would complete that extension. That's the engineer that you selected that would put the cost estimate together for us as well as Betty and her group working with us to write the grant. So the resolution is in your packet. I would ask that we change one item. And that is under section five, a minimum matching funds in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. It has to be at least sixty because of our population, and so we need to write at least sixty. I would not want us to be hamstrung over, even if it's sixty thousand and one dollar on an application process.
So we need to change that to what?
The minimum matching funds in the amount of at least sixty thousand dollars.
Mayor, motion for approval for seven-six.
Well, I make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty sixteen seven ninety-six with the correction on section five to the minimum matching funds in the amount of at least sixty thousand.
Second.
Will first say aye.
Aye.
Was it cam?
Oh.
Whatever somebody gave me is making noise. Which is why I'm giving it to the ex-husband first. The next item before you is a pipeline right-of-way agreement. We have had a twenty-year agreement with Southcross Energy, CCNG, a couple of other subsidiary names. The peak rate that they paid us last year was sixteen thousand dollars. And the adjustments were based on the CPI, a very complicated formula. We have gone back and said we would like to start this year at twenty thousand dollars. And we would like a three percent increase per year for the life of the lease, which is a twenty-year... It's a ten with a, oh, a five and five, sorry. So, do I have anybody from the energy pipeline company? I thought Captain Wood was going to get up and represent the pipeline company.
He's multitasking.
I wanted to know why he was working at PD at the pipeline company.
Sylvia, the contract I reviewed was in the name of Southcross.
Yes.
And I had asked that we find out who, what CCNG is, whether they're a subsidiary, a signee, or who they are.
We received an email, they are a subsidiary, too.
Okay, well, I think, if the council approves this, I would like for the contract to be changed to show that.
Okay.
So we have a clear chain of title.
Okay. So tonight's motion would be CCNG and its affiliates, parent companies, and subsidiaries.
Mayor, motion for approval for item seven-seven.
I make a motion, we approve item seven-seven, listing the name of the parent company and subsidiaries, CCNG Gas Gathering LP.
Second the motion.
Will first say aye.
Aye.
The next item before you is a tax resale property for the property located at seven fifty, seven zero one North Rife Street. The offer was made by Mr. Ruben Salinas in the amount of ten thousand five hundred. The amount due to all of the entities is twenty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-one. The city would receive three thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars if the offer was accepted. And at this point, we do not have a counteroffer.
You said the city would receive three thousand one hundred and sixty-seven?
Correct.
On our packet?
It says twenty-nine.
On the packet, it says twenty-nine, forty-nine, thirty-three.
The county gets thirty-one.
Oh, you're right. The, Mary, which is the correct amount?
This one?
Oh, okay. They just got it reversed on this other page, then.
Motion for approval of seven-eight.
I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty sixteen seven ninety-seven, the tax resale property for Mr. Salinas, is that correct?
Yeah, Ruben Salinas.
Ruben Salinas.
Second.
Will first say aye.
Aye.
The other entities have not received, have not accepted their bid, so there's a possibility you'll see this again. Robert Branch, are you here to represent the Rotary? Please. The next item is a consider an act on a five thousand dollar donation to the Rotary Club for the Early Act First Night program. It does begin a program within the schools of character building, honesty, integrity. This year, the program is seeking to add an anti-bullying, anti-domestic violence spin, given the recent tragedy that we had earlier in the year. The school has been very receptive as opposed to recreating an entirely new curriculum, piggybacking onto the current curriculum. And it is a third-party administrator, the Rotary Club just has been funding the program in the schools for the last, oh, seven or eight years, Robert? Can you come up to the podium?
Hello, Robert Branch. Been in the Rotary for twenty-seven years. The last four or five years, three or four years, we've been doing Early Act First Night. We started in the fourth and fifth grades, and we've dropped it down to the Keberger, second and third grades. And it's a character building situation. The teacher picks one out of their class. I think it's a leverage thing that's good for the teacher, too. And they're able to select the person that has displayed that character each six, is it every, six weeks. And they're, they're given a medallion. And we've had the police come in and help us since they've wanted a bullying program incorporated with it. Sir Cass, who comes down, he's actual night. We have several that help out when he can't be there. Even did jousting with horses, and it really impressed the kids. But what's most impressive is the character that we're building in the school. We've, we've paid about ten thousand a year, our Rotary Club. We self-地点, we give a comedy show each year to try to make money for it. And now that the city police have wanted to do some bullying-type things, and some of the bullying programs in the school haven't seemed to work, and ours seems to work. It seems like we could, we'd like to have help doing what we do. It's, it's a good program. My education, psychology and biology, even though I sell seashells for years and years, I can see the difference in some of these kids. And I think you'll notice a difference over the years' time in our city, how it's going to help, help the whole community.
Hey, Robert, how many students have you guys had gone through this already?
Several years. We seat them, there's about twelve picked every six weeks. And then they take their chair, even when the next ones are going to be picked the next six weeks. We have chairs for them ready. They're knighted, they get them a medallion, they, their parents are there. It's just a big deal. It really brings up their self-esteem. I remember when I was young and I was picked most creative boy in the class in the fourth grade. That's gone a long way with me. I mean, I know what it's going to do for these kids. To answer your question, I'd say we've been going on three or four years, maybe five. Soon as some of the people became Rotarians, they, they noticed these things that the president-elect seminar, that some of the other areas were doing. Victoria's done it for, before us, and it's worked out real well there. We invite anyone to come during the six weeks and see it. We hold it twice every six weeks. It takes about an hour to an hour and a half. Usually we do the Falkland in the mornings. And then we do the Charlie Marshall School at one-thirty, nine, or nine-thirty. And it's worked out real good. The teachers all tell about the student they've selected. The parents come in right at the last because they, nobody knows who's going to get it. And it's a big surprise for the ones that do. And I think they all try to gain that through their actions. It's quite a program. We call it Early Act First Night.
What are some of the virtues of the teachers?
Eric can address the PD side of it.
Hold on.
Well, honesty, just all the great characters you can think of. I can't think, I can't think of them right off. Compassion.
Integrity, compassion, loyalty, honesty.
Honesty, yeah, it's just everything good you can think of. It's just trying to make this kid a good kid, and I believe they're doing it. Like I say, we invite all of y'all to come see it. And it's worked out. I think they really like seeing the chief there helping out with his, some of his people giving the medallions also. Somebody they can look up to.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we jumped in late on the game with the chamber, and I will tell you, to see that these kids are working hard to achieve these awards is amazing. While the rest of the world is teaching their kids, "We'll take care of you for the rest of your life," we're teaching them and instilling accountability and responsibility. And it's amazing how these kids can sit there young, and they can recite off the core values of the Rotary, which we as, and I'm not a member of the Rotary, but we as Americans and people in this society need to re-grasp. So, when I saw the program the first time and how awesome these kids respond to it, and how excited they are to have an opportunity to win, I loved it, I was all in on it. They have a bullying program that, that they also do for Early Act First Night, and I told them I want to get that bullying program, give it a shot, and so.
I would like to say that we as Rotarians try to live by the four-way test, and these kids are learning it. They recite it, and they know it, it's called, "Is it the truth, is it fair to all concerned, will it build goodwill and better friendships, will it be beneficial to all concerned?" And that's what we try to live by.
We add, "Is it fun?"
And we added, "Is it fun?" in our club. We have nine, or ten members, Ronnie Jaeger and his wife Peggy, Romero Gomez, Randall Freeze, myself, Karen Gale, former mayor. We have Sylvia, is back with us now. We have several, James Holland with the Autoplex, he's very, he works with the community a lot. Bud Lockwood, the big shot with the big gas lifter vacation, gonna be the big shot, he's one of five, four or five, but Oxycam as it was. He won't be back in the club until February, so busy. But, yeah, it's a good program, and we work hard to be able to put that and to get scholarships each year. It's one big part of what we're doing.
Yeah, I've been to a couple of the First Act ceremonies, and the thing that impressed me the most was the respect and manners those kids had at such a young age. We didn't have that when I was a kid, you know, we were respectful, but, I mean, these kids were well behaved, I mean, you hold a hand up and you could hear a pin drop.
It's gonna change them all.
Yeah. We have the money for it?
Yes, in council discretionary. So, have we ever funded this project before?
I think it's the first time.
No, this is the first time the city funds it, actually, the city and PD are tag teaming to help get the anti-bullying, the domestic violence component into, we do second and third and fourth and fifth, so we're trying to get it into the younger.
We have a motion for approval for item seven, nine.
Yeah, making a motion that we approve the request for the Rotary Club for five thousand dollars for the Early Act First Night Program.
Second the motion.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Auction?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, the city's up and ready for another auction, so I've prepared a list of those items that we're looking at auction, basically, just like the last auction, we're requesting approval from the council on these one-hundred-and-one items to proceed with an auction, if the items do not sell, to allow the city staff to discard of them. Yeah, I'm sorry for the small.
Yeah, we get a magnifying glass to come along with this list here.
It's, sorry about the small print, that's how the software we're using to compile the agenda, puts them together. But you can, actually, if you looked at it on a digital copy, you can blow it up like Sylvia's done right here.
Can you just give me like a, is it what, vehicles or computers?
We have, as far as the departments that have contributed, it's Police Department, we have one vehicle, some of it's, a lot of it's IT stuff, like the old phones that we, we've upgraded, old printers, old AEDs, the Harbor Masters, the two thousand and one black Chevy Suburban that you see always parked out here. The Fire Department has some weird stuff here, well, fire stuff. Like an old ice maker that's broke, or there, I don't know if it's broke, I'm sorry, pressure washer, just kind of some old stuff there. Pool has a pool blanket reel, and I think those items are, the reels are working, the other items are getting rid of like pumps, motors, handicap lift chair and stuff like that, they're all broken. So, the chances are they're not gonna sell, but we're gonna have to discard them. And then you got the IT department, which has old shell of a computers, basically, they take the hard drives out of them, and we want to get rid of the computers. And those things tend to sell pretty good on auction.
Our last auction ended with.
Yeah, we were like record, I mean, the owner of the company wanted to talk to us personally because we made a lot of money on that sale, over a hundred thousand.
Oh, wow.
Dollars.
That's good.
At auction, so they made a good chunk of it, and the city made like that hundred grand or so on it. All the funds that come back at auction, unless, like my, some of my things like that, one vehicle's a drug seizure vehicle that has to go into the drug fund account. But all the other items will go back into the general fund of the city if they sell.
And the vehicles are as-is, Brett?
Yeah, they're, and I make, my vehicles, I make them worse sounding than they actually are, because I don't want to have to deal with that later on. So, most of the time, we'll say they don't run or whatever, and when you get to them, "Oh, it does run, well, hey, you lucked out, buddy, great." You know, I just, I don't want to have to deal with, you said it is this way, and it's not.
So, no little old lady from Pasadena stories on the car, right?
I'll tell you, this vehicle we have is a drug seizure for the Police Department, it's like a restored old Chevy, and it's beautiful, it's a Chevy truck. It's really, really nice, it's like a classic collection, somebody's gonna love that one, and it does run.
Oh, describe our Suburban.
It's a pile.
How about your old truck?
It still runs and drives, but.
We had to put a fumigator in it, that'll most explain.
Any other questions for Council on this item?
We have a motion for approval.
I make a motion that we approve the citywide online auction with Renee Bates Auctioneers.
Second.
I'll first say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Council, thank you. The next item, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item are just the department stats for November, the numbers are pretty well, you know, consistent month after month. Complaints are, you know, they're still low, there are complaint process, we have an informal complaint process, and I think I brought this up last council meeting. And we have a formal complaint process, we're trying to get complaints to follow the formal process, because I will tell you, with staff, if somebody posts a complaint on a post, on a city Facebook posting, and they're complaining about an officer or officer activity or whatever on that post, I had been treating those like complaints when I just happened upon them, because we investigate everything we find for quality, control, and service that we provide. We look at everything. I'm not doing that no more, because it was, it was kind of demoralizing the staff, and we had several staff say, "Hey, look, you put this thing on there that's a complaint on Facebook, there's no substance to it, but it's in my file, I don't like that." Even though we even documented that there was no substance, so now we are reflecting policy-type complaints. So, if they follow the policy on filing a complaint, that's what I will be reporting to Council. So, we had one complaint, and it wasn't internal, it's something we found, and obviously, when we find a problem, it's founded, so it was one founded complaint. We had eleven staff recognitions again, where staff's being recognized, and you have, in the patrol highlights, you have some of those explained. I have one of my patrol officers who works so hard at the liquor violations, he thinks he's a TABC agent, but he doesn't want to leave us yet, because he's having too much fun. So, he decided he wanted to do minor stings for establishments before the major holidays, and he did, he hit fifteen, I'm sorry for the typo, it says sixteen. He hit fifteen businesses, five of them sold to minors, some of them even sold to minors after they provided their minor ID that said they were under twenty-one until a certain date. Criminal charges have been filed on all of those, they're Class A misdemeanors, so they're gonna have to go to jail, and they will probably go to court afterwards. We decided to put a twist on it, and we went out to the ten businesses that actually refused to sell, and we took pictures with the officer that ran the operation and the business, and we promoted them on our Facebook page to roughly our ten thousand followers on Facebook. We got a lot of favorable responses on that, they liked the way that we highlighted that. Again, the heart start was deployed, we recognized Captain Wood earlier, and again, that was a defibrillator that was provided by the Coastal Bend Foundation. You got some other highlights there, I won't touch on too many of those, training remains consistent, we had a robbery, if you remember, back in October, on Halloween, we had a robbery at the Peerless Cleaners, we actually have that case resolved, we got a warrant for the subject if he hasn't already been picked up. Interesting case here, a gentleman was sentenced to twenty-five years in prison on a dope charge, he's probably a repeat, heavy repeat offender. And one of our bait cases, this is kind of comical, the neighbor was caught stealing the neighbor's bait, which was our bait at the neighbor's house. I thought that was kind of cool to mention. Hate to have that neighbor. But that's all I have for the highlights, again, these highlights will be published online, they're probably already there now. And, oh, I'm so sorry, the most important part of my night tonight is Alan Mize, go ahead and stand up, Alan. He is our new officer, I skipped over him. Alan is Aransas Pass High School graduate, and he was also one of our police explorers, and we are very happy to have a police explorer join our team full-time, so welcome aboard.
Next, we have Chief Cox doing the Fire Department update.
Yeah, Council, I don't want to take too much of your time, I just want to highlight some of the calls we've made, this is gonna run from the time of September through the end of October. When I ran this report on December the fifth, we're at five hundred and seventeen runs, if you'll take a look just a little bit lower, you'll see that we made three hundred and sixty-one last year total. For that time period, we made ninety-seven responses, that's an increase of sixty-point-seven-nine percent. So, adding the first responder program, just to show you that the call for services are much, much higher. We've just now, at this period that we started the, these stats, we had just started the inspection bureau, so we got a lot bigger numbers now, but at that time, we have indexed two hundred and forty-four businesses, basically just capturing information, what business do we have, and what capacity do they run? All the way to, we went to a point where even some of these empty buildings, we want to categorize those, we know what we may be going into. We captured two hundred and forty-four of those, we, at that time, did eleven inspections, again, I didn't have the inspector on duty at that time, that was stuff that was being done on duty. And we have just about completed the fire inspections of all city facilities. Training is strong and well at the Fire Department, we've done two hundred and thirty-four hours, plus another forty of in-house training. Some of these are, we're even offering through TEACs, Texas A&amp;M and FEMA, so we had one of those classes that we actually hosted, other organizations such as Portland Ingleside, Rockport, they actually participated in it. Lot, lot of changes on the hydrants, just showing that we have four hundred and twenty-one, which, those weren't categorized at that time, but we did capture three more. What happens is, there's more out there we can't stumble upon and find, or we're starting to get in the AHJ, trying to figure those out. So, we actually picked up three more, and then we have a small decrease there of the hydrants that are out of service, so Public Works has returned a few to the service, we went back there, categorized those. So, you'll see that nearly ten percent drop in the ones that we have out of service. We're starting the indexing and testing for all hydrants inside of the AHJ. No injuries for the state range and no near-miss reports. On the second page here, you'll see some grant money that we received in this time period, we got Helping Hands, which is a partnership between Coke Pipeline and Flint Resources for twenty-five hundred dollars. Under House Bill twenty-six oh four, I got two grants of six hundred and twenty-five for a total of twelve fifty from, for the Texas Fire Chiefs Academy. And then also, we've got three inspectors participating in online training through the same House Bill twenty-six oh four for, they've contributed one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. And as you know, we've heard from prior council meetings, that we've got eight thousand six hundred and seventy is our part from the vacant vest. As you go through your pamphlet here, you'll see just a kind of, just a rundown, what kind of runs we're making, it doesn't get too, too specific. We have parameters that kind of categorizes those, so you'll see just whether they're hazardous, rescue fires, and EMS. And these are, these are very typical numbers of what we'd see at any fire department or city our size. That's a breakdown a little bit further on page number three. I'm always, maybe I'm just a nerd, but I'm always impressed by the heat map that you'll see, we're following that, just in the saturation of where actually our runs are. That's really important to know, is where we're keeping the trucks, where we're likely to go. So, when we have road outages, that we're repaving and stuff, if it's in one of my high-index areas, well, that's, you know, of importance to me. And then finally, you just see some, just general, I want to start kind of including this on the reports, as, let you start seeing it when it's a smaller number. These are the businesses that we started contributing, look at some of the places, we're trying to be diverse on what we're going out there looking at, but our target habits, we mentioned that before, you'll see there's a couple bars on there, nursing homes, health cares, there's a foster care on there, foster home, I'm sorry. And so, we're just looking for those type areas, that's the stuff we're capturing first. And I'll see what else they've got on there. And then there's just one more piece of paper on there that just shows some of the specific classes we did, we did building instruction, some more driver-operator training. We have a lot of young guys that, you know, so they get out of their little Honda Civic, and then they get into my, you know, you know, very large fire truck. So, it's super important to kind of keep that training to protect the asset that belongs to the city and the citizens here. We did some technical rope training, and then some pump operations, just again, trying to train people, the younger firemen to get up to speed. And that's all I have, you have any questions for the Fire Department?
I see you got something with the new hydrants you put out?
That's just the ones that are out of service, and I wanted to highlight that, you know, as busy as Public Works has been, they still continue, they have some that they're, you know, they're in the queue. And I'm showing it, in that time period there, they had actually put enough in, I don't know what the actual number was, but I just see the result was like nine and a half percent were returned back to service. Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, I wanted to remind you that his, I'm sure you recall, when we first started the fire inspections, it wasn't, it wasn't a welcome inspection. We amended the ordinance a little bit, those inspections that serve to generate an actual business on the ground is also gonna help us in the emergency management phase. We know how many roofers are in town, we know what type of businesses we have in town to protect our citizens from those vultures that inevitably come in during those time periods. So, Chief Cox's group is doing their part in making sure we, we have a record of all the businesses operating in town.
This is previous to item thirteen, our citizen comments, it's eight oh three, floor is now open for citizen comments.
Grease Choppa, thirteen forty-five West Greenwood Avenue. I've got a few things I'd like to address, especially the minutes from twelve five, and there it states that I had mentioned about the city manager doing great things. I don't recall that, I mentioned about the employees, of course, I can't find the livestream video, nothing's been posted for months. The point I was trying to make was that according to your budget, that's posted on your website, it talks about, in order to keep the costs under control, the employee dental vision will no longer be offered by the city. And my question was, how can you justify giving her a raise when the city can't afford to even supply insurance for your employees? to even supply insurance for your employees? You're taking away from, or you took away from them, actually. To me, that's just bad morale and that's bad management. As a manager, a city manager should be watching out for her people and by getting the raise, I don't see that. And one of the other citizens commented on a figures based on population with the city. So I went and I pulled some information from an association that your city manager is a member of. It's the Texas City Management Association and I have a copy here. And I'm just going to point the Aransas, Portland and Rockport, the information they have posted and this was dated February ninth, two thousand sixteen. Aransas's population says eight thousand nine hundred sixty and her base salary was a hundred and eight, which is now a hundred and twenty-seven, eight fifty. Portland has a population of eighteen thousand five hundred and their base salary was a hundred and forty. The Rockport population is ten thousand thirty-six with a base salary of a hundred and twenty-eight, five sixty-five. Aransas doesn't compare to Rockport and Portland. So, you know, I disagree with the minutes and I hope your live stream or the video, the recording is there so I can get a copy. The next thing I want to talk about is the water bill. I got my water bill and I came up here on Friday because the previous amount is my last two payments, which I understand I didn't get a bill because of the software change, but if we ever have to make an adjustment down the line, I think it needs to reflect whatever my last payment was. And I don't agree on how it was averaged because if you have a student that was in school or you had somebody that passed away or somebody that's no longer in your house, how can you average and charge them down the line when they're not in the household? And I've been monitoring my water bill. I went online and found a copy of this that has a picture of the radiometer that I asked to have installed because my water bill was getting to be way too high. And it shows on here, because I hear a lot about the leaks. Well, it has an icon on this meter that will tell you if you have a leak. And I think the city needs to post this so that people, the citizens, can understand how their meter's being read or how to figure out how many gallons they're actually using. I've been monitoring for about a week and I've only used probably thirteen hundred gallons of water. So my average is fifty-nine hundred gallons, but to me, that's high. Maybe five thousand fifty-two for three people. I was talking about Rockport. If you go to their website, they have a section on there that says financial transparency and on there, it lists all their budgets, it lists check registers, current check registers. And I think that's something that Aransas needs to post on their website because I think the people deserve to know what the city's paying. And then I've got a question about the demolition of these homes. From what I understand, Robert, who is the city manager's boyfriend, and I witnessed it myself because there was a house that was being demolished across the street from me, if he's a volunteer, what is he doing operating city equipment? For the city attorney, what's the city's liability for that? Or is he a paid employee? And if he's a paid employee, I think that's a conflict of interest. So, you know, I disagree with a lot of things going on. And then my last thing that I'd like to point out, there's a copy of the ethics from the Texas City Management Association, which still is a member. And there's some things I'd like to point out that some of the principles are. And the first one is dedicate to the highest ideals of honor and integrity, serve the best interests of all the people, and encourage communication between citizens and local government, and to be friendly and courteous service to the public. I want to question to you, is there transparency in Aransas? Is there public trust? Because I don't think there is. And I hope you implement some of these things I've, I've suggested because I think that the citizens need to know. That's all I have to say. And I, some of these copies that I've shown to you, I'm going to present them to your city secretary to be on record, just for reference.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a citizen comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Jason Harris. I work with TXU Energy. We were originally going to be on the agenda, but the RFP got pushed back. I don't know if, I remember recognizing some of y'all from a couple of years back. We came in and did a presentation, gave y'all a proposal for electricity bid, which we will be in on y'all's next meeting. Reason I wanted to come talk tonight, even though that I wasn't on the, on the agenda, was just to let y'all know that we're here for the bid. We actually had signed a proposal the last time around, ended up that y'all were still in a contract. What ended up happening, a company called TCAP, which is supposed to be a company that's supposed to be helping a lot of the cities get better rates, had a contract re-signed or enforced. Well, what ended up happening is that the contract they enforced was totally different than what they offered y'all. And what I mean by that is they said a blend and extend pricing. Well, they actually went up in price. We went ahead and let y'all out of the contract we signed so no penalties would be involved. All I really want y'all to do is for when the next meeting comes up that we're here and whoever else is going to be bidding, is when you're looking at the bottom line on the pricing, everybody's going to be slightly different, but there's a lot of other things that you have to consider if they're a broker, such as TCAP. If you look deeply into their contracts, their contract actually state in certain things, so look into it, that they can actually change their pricing. Okay? So just kinda look into that. Also, if there's any brokers coming in and bidding, if they're bidding really, really super low, and what I mean by that, lower than us, is because we are the largest electric provider in the state of Texas. Brokers have their fees they have to charge. So when you're looking at their contracts, kinda look at that. Also, look at what kind of city that they have underneath their belt references and stuff. We have several cities that are with us. TCAP has a lot because they were, that's what their goal was. But we have also taken a lot of cities from TCAP because of the way they presented their contracts last time around. Thank you very much for your time. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, just so you know, the bids will be on the next council agenda. Mary has a preliminary bid opening and it looks like our rate has been slashed in half.
That's just electric, so?
Yes.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a citizen comment? Not, they'll close the comments at eight fourteen. We're gonna move to executive session at eight fifteen, pursuing the five-five-one-point-oh-seventy-one consultation with the city attorney over harbor lease of the Captain Bates Shack. Item B will be section five-five-one-point-oh-seventy-one consultation, city attorney, harbor lease of the Aransas Marineways. If you're not here when we come back, I wish you all have a Merry Christmas and a good New Year and be safe. If you are, hopefully it won't be that long. If you are, hopefully it won't be that long.
Okay.